Knowing what the process is if they want to put the two hundred amp charger in their garage. So their contractor knows what they would have to do. So I would come to you in the future on that, but they're two separate things, so just let you know that that'd be on.
I think for five, for, for total five thousand dollars, if we're able to get the money for them.
No, they could freeze up.
Nobody's probably really aware of you.
But I think if it's trading in law though, so that it's, it's official, isn't it?
So if we, if we put the sentence in as a law.
If you adopt a law resolution.
Or resolution.
Which those are different.
I think I've got a basis.
Down the road, we take it back.
You would pass it with a different resolution. NYSER does not require that you keep it for some period of time. They only require that at the time you apply for the grant, that it was in effect, and I would certify that fact. But there's no, you don't have to promise NYSER you're gonna keep it. They're hoping institutional inertia is enough for the thing. And if there are any problems with it, or if the village doesn't like it, the same way that you passed it by resolution, is how you would unpass it by resolution, which is nothing more than a motion by the board with a fancy piece of paper that spells out what it was.
So can we, uh, run this by our code enforcement guy and see what he thinks of this before we do this?
Absolutely, that's what I gave to Gary. What meeting was that?
Uh.
It was a first meeting.
I don't know, we had four or five last month. Take the cheese away from my.
Yeah. And I would be having to call him and ask if he does have any problems with it, but I want to let the board know that that's out there and if you want to act on it sooner rather than later.
I wouldn't dare.
He came in and got me down here.
I would like to pass it just so that he could.
I like that better because Gary's having his possession for how long?
I, I ain't doing nothing until he, I have nothing, this is all group to me. I want him to come in here and say, hey, okay, or yay, no.
Has Gary been in lately?
Uh, he was in last Thursday.
All right, just so you know, if you, that's perfectly understandable and acceptable, and I'd probably do the same. Just letting you know, there is a deadline for the grant application process.
When is that?
Well, the funding ends in September.
Yeah.
I think the grant application process ends at the, either the end of July or the end of June. I don't know which, which is why I was bringing it to you now, because I mentioned it before. So it would have to be sooner rather than later. Also, it's only there for as long as the money is in NYSER's hands. If something like two million dollars has the incentive cost to give municipalities, we have no idea when that's going to run out.
So later, later.
So sooner or later.
Jump around.
Right.
Bang like you know.
Soon July, we got about six meetings to talk about it.
Well, yes, but there's lots of other stuff.
But here's, here's my, here's my point in regards to this, is just so that he can draft right up the grant and then we have to approve of that, correct? Or would you just go ahead and submit the grant?
I would ask you to pass a motion to allow me to sign the real grant. But this has, you have to have approved this first in order to apply for the grant.
I mean, as you've read this just for the past five minutes, I mean, is it not simple enough to say, hey, you know what? Let's go ahead and let's get this going.
All this says is if somebody wants to install a permit or wants to install a solar panel, they fill out this permit. And then Gary Brecker brings it to the board and says, hey, do we approve this permit or not? But this just specifies the form that the permit application has to take. That's all this resolution does. That the permit application has to look like that so that the same developer, developer sees the same one. In have the fifteen hundred or fifteen hundred fifty.
Right, so we need to start processing.
But if you're going to do it, if you choose, there's two things you have to specify. How many copies of their, their drawings they need to submit? And what the permit fee is. And you have to decide those when you choose to pass the resolution, if you choose to.
So what would.
Typically, permit applications, twenty-five, thirty bucks, but you can decide how you want to do that.
Would it be like?
Because it's basically, you're charging for Gary's time.
Would it be like fifty dollars, is that?
That's your minimum.
Would be fifty? And how many, requiring sets of, oh, the number of.
Oh, sets of the, the drawings for what's going to go in.
So what, one, two?
As many as you think. What does Gary typically ask for? Or when there are going to be changes, there are set number of plans that the village already uses for, uh, building permits?
No, we don't, we haven't had that much in the way of new buildings.
If you've required one set if you want, you don't have to require multiples, it's a convenience thing. Are you gonna spend your time copying their drawings, or, this is to put in a solar permit? Or a solar panel, my guess is it would be a one-page drawing. So you only ask them to submit one copy, you might make them for a copy of it, you're talking about a five cent difference with that.
So fifty dollars and requiring just one set, right? I mean, it's not.
Yeah.
I don't see a huge deal with that.
Choices, I'm sure we'll talk to Gary within the next.
Well, can I get a motion to adopt the uniform solar panel permit application?
Yeah, I'm watching it.
I have a second. I'll make the second.
This is, this is.
I'm not working like Gary looking at it, man, it's not. I mean, what's the big deal?
So we can go ahead and get it submitted so that we can do money quickly. It's just moving forward, I mean, it's solar panels, A, how many people are being.
Don't, don't, don't get scared.
Doesn't sound like rocket science, I mean, I'm just saying, let's just see what Gary says about it. How many sets of drawings he wants, you know, hopefully say one and all of a sudden it's like, what are you saying?
You can almost change a resolution by a resolution. It's not, it's, it's really difficult stuff, this should be something we can go ahead and approve and he can start working on the grant and the village gets twenty-five hundred bucks, it's easy money.
Then if we decide that we don't want?
Then we can.
We pass it.
By another resolution.
Whatever, I don't care.
Well, I second.
These guys are just blowing out of proportion, it's really easy stuff.
All right, so all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous, carried and approved. All right, so you will go ahead and work on the grant and get that done so that we can submit this quickly and hopefully get the twenty-five hundred, correct?
Good night, good night, guys.
Good night.
Yes, may I? And generally, if you would allow, I'd like to, if you get the grant, I'd like to count that time against my sixty. And if you don't get the grant, then I won't, is that all right with you?
Aye, definitely.
Roxelle, yeah, you should be right about ten minutes, we'll give you that.
Is there anything else that you have to report?
There's no freebies.
Jake?
In another meeting, I'll have the other one for you.
Okay.
Uh, we're wanted to add library to the.
Yeah, I, I wrote library too.
Oh, actually, I wanted to address, uh, Mr. Christopher's question about the easement. When I, we had the break, it occurred to me that there's extra language in the easement. So the easement describes what his property says. It, the legal description that Jason's surveyor brought to us. But I specifically included additional language in the easement for what he's allowed to use to access the property. Which I was intentionally vague, anticipating that there might be a problem with the description of the property by meets and bounds, which is starting at a rod, it's such a location, go by so many rough chains. Anyway, I also put, as well as right to access the same, using the property beyond eighty-eight North Franklin historically used for refuse, as well as further footage beyond that to access what's described above, that triangle. But in the easement itself, it also specifically says, if anybody's injured from the use of the easement, that falls on Mr. Offrebeck, and it falls on whoever owns the property. It says in the easement itself that he indemnifies the village and holds them harmless and he would be the one liable for anyone getting injured on that property. And not the village itself, and that's in the written easement that got recorded in the county.
Thank you.
So someone goes down there and, 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 and they say they're using the yard waste dump instead of visiting Mr. Offrebeck?
An interesting question.
That's my point. This is a lifelong decision you're making, not even lifelong, it's, it's a decision that's last forever, you know? It's not a simple resolution like you were just talking about, you know?
But, but here's the thing though, is how do you, how do you deny somebody access when they've had it, when it's been historically used for the past fifty years, probably even longer than that? It, it, it shouldn't really be this much of an issue, and with him having the covers that is, that you put in there.
Right.
It, it should, and you know what, then I guess it shows then, oh, well, then it's up to whoever, if they were to get injured and they were to go forward with a suit, who they're gonna go after.
The village has the argument with the easement to say, hey, all right, you think you can sue us, but your, your suit just got that much more complex.
Good luck to your turtle.
Or they get past time to the town too.
Correct.
This is why I wanted to survey, I mean, everybody wants to put this to bed. Eric doesn't.
Even if there was a survey, there'd be so.
Well, it is a good demand.
If there was a survey, there'd be a problem with it.
And, and now with surveys, you have to go with, if they go by due north or all, or true north or whatever the heck it's called. I mean, everything is shifted on how they're doing stuff now and it's.
I'm using magnetic versus true north in the lines here.
Yeah. It, it's, from what we had surveyed from back fifty years ago to what it is today is completely different. And who's to say what's truly correct?
But it covers.
The surveyor's the one who's licensed to say.
Well, here's the next thing, at the property that we have.
They make mistakes too.
Yeah.
They make mistakes.
So who owns the driveway from where the gate used to be down to?
Okay, we're, can we?
Supreme, no, I want to know this question. Who owns the, the land, is it the town, land or village that owns where the gate used to be at the top of the hill, at the end of Franklin, down around the corner to where the easement is?
I would say that's a village property. And the easement doesn't change who owns it. It's only the village granting.
Right.
Access for ingress and egress.
So you're telling me in that thirty-three or point thirty-three acres?
Mm-hmm.
That goes from the top of the hill all the way down?
No, it probably doesn't, but the easement also says, and that further footage required to access the same, meaning the triangle.
But probably doesn't would look good on a survey that says it does, or it does not, not a probably. That's all I'm getting at.
No, what I'm saying is should that easement have gone to the top of the hills?
The easement does go to the top of the hill, it just doesn't do it with the legal description part, it does it with the, and that further footage required to access.
Right. Then why even mention the point three-three?
You have to describe it using some kind of landmark so that people know where to put it on a map.
Like the electric pole that's on village property that it contains his main service?
If the electric pole is the location that's recorded in a deed somewhere, you could use it as a landmark, but if not, then I don't think you can. But I'm now a hundred percent certain on whether or not the pole is gonna have a recorded location.
Well, it's on village property and it has his service entry on it, so that's an issue in my mind too, but that's.
Yeah, you'd like to know if they don't have an easement on that.
Okay, we got some correspondence.
Correspondence, so.
This process when buying property.
You gotta finish library, there's library, then we gotta run through correspondence again.
Fun, like, the library is just that, um, they're landing up right now, but, um, Mr. Earhart, they're all getting up in age and you ask it, probably around September timeframe, they're hoping to get some younger people maybe to get into the board for the library. Just because there's, there's some health issues with a lot of the ones that are there, but they're afraid to just stop.
Right.
So, just to get that word out, if anybody wants to get into it or something like that.
Okay.
You got till September.
All righty, uh, for correspondence, um.
The alumni association request?
Well, the, well, first off is we have the, uh, what, the homes and community renewal request for federal assistance expenditure form? I thought, I thought we did this one already.
We did do one in May, this is a new request from, um, that, uh, shoot, what's her name?
Mary.
Mary, thank you, Mary from Municipal Solutions forwarded to us.
Okay.
So I printed off the new form for both you and Jean to sign.
Okay. Um. Next, you listed the email from Eric, uh, what email was that?
Youth council.
Uh, Eric, did you refresh the sign of the youth council email that you sent?
Uh, just, I was trying to give you the whole story, that's all I was trying to do.
Okay.
And, and.
And I did copy the recreation director job description to the board.
And, and as part of that, have you, have you applied to the county for allocation of, of state funds for this year's youth program? It's, it's part of the process, the state's supposed to go through, so I don't know.
She did say that she's filled out, she's done a couple of things.
She's done for the best five years, I assume she's not gonna stop to run the same routine.
Well, she did for three years, that's what, that's my fault, that's the issue.
Yeah, we wanna make sure she's doing that.
The villages, the, the, the municipalities lost out on about thirty-five hundred dollars in refunds from the state because Stacy didn't do her job. That's the point I'm trying to.
The point is all dropped out.
Yes.
So.
Because they didn't get reimbursed for three years after what they put in.
So with you two on that, handling that, please make sure that gets done so that we get. Um, next was the quote from the village auto service, and we already utilized both, uh, Scott Ziefla and Jared Bradley, uh, for servicing the police vehicle. Um, next was New York State Homes and Community Renewal, uh, just staff change, uh, now it's what, it's, I believe it's actually Charlie, it's Charlie that we're speaking with now that's handling, is that right, Rose?
Yeah, he's.
Same guy from CBBG. Um. CAP Central School Alumni Association requests for storage space.
They request a closet-sized vacant space upstairs, um, to use as a central convenient place to store banquet supplies and some records, presently scattered between officers' homes. No liability would be placed on the village for these items, we understand access would be during village office hours only.
Where are they having it stored right now?
Uh, scattered between officers' homes.
I, I don't see, I don't like the part that if something were to happen to the village, then we were responsible for their, for their stuff, I mean, this building is not.
Oh, we're responsible for their things?
No.
No, it says no liability would be placed on the village.
Oh, no liability, I'm sorry, I thought you said it there. All right, sorry, what, we're going on?
What is there on the store?
You make sure that's in writing?
What is it there on the store?
They wanna store banquet supplies and some records for the alumni association.
The village would want to make sure that there is some, uh, where it says there's no liability, make sure that's in writing and signed and authorized by whomever in the group is, so they're present.
This is, this is a letter from them, uh, signed by their secretary.
Make sense?
This has been done before?
No, they're just like, oh, for this store here, so they have a central location, so they're not going from one person's house to the other ones to grab all this stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what?
If the village wants to, make sure that it's in the motion that the village accepts no liability for any of their personal property, if anything happens to it, whether even through the cause of some village employee or officer.
All right, so can I have a motion to authorize?
If you choose to.
So do we regret that? Do we know how much there is?
No, we don't. She said a closet-sized vacant space.
Yeah, because we're talking of personal merchandise and that we're not liable. So it should be written in that it's.
No, 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 what I was asking is, do we need to make a motion before it's in writing to then make a motion?
Well, they put in there that the board is not held liable. Right, it says that written.
It does say it in there, and I would suggest that if you are going to grant it, that in the motion it specifically says, you're not, the village is not liable for any of the property and any damage that happens to it, theft.
So can I have a motion for CAP Central School Alumni Association?
I'll make a motion.
To, oh, hold on, to finish it, to authorize the, you can't have a.
We don't.
Oh, well, it's not for the state. So, uh, to authorize them to store just closet space, to store, uh, stuff, and that the village is not held responsible if they were to get damaged, lost or stolen by any village employer, anybody.
Or any other person.
Or any other person for that matter, do I have a motion?
Nice work. I make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, carried and approved. Uh, time work, cable, fire area agreement, same stuff, uh, nothing that affects the cost.
Just the wage.
Um, and the, uh, uh, West New York Regional Economic Development Council, uh, which is CFA workshops, um, which when I went to Omen Antad for the water and wastewater conference, and that's primarily, who to use is pretty much would be the CFA. And also, I mean, I didn't realize, I didn't know, but CBBG has like a plethora of funds, is what he made it out to be, for, for getting stuff done, so in regards to the sewer stuff issues that we have, um, going to work on, see, working with Municipal Solutions, actually, I'm gonna talk to them, see about submitting for a grant for that. Um, and hopefully we can get some stuff done with our pumps and generators and equipment and all of that. Uh, so that's good. New York State TEC, uh, which is a public comment on two ninety-one Homer's site, does anybody have anything to add on that? I don't.
No.
Uh, and then, let's see here, we already talked about theme of funds received, that's good.
There was also, NICOM sent us, um, a copy of their letter they're sending to the Majority Leader of the New York State Senate.
Yep.
That one, and then we received a letter today from CAP Area Historical Society thanking John. And I've already given John a copy and, uh, a copy to the town and village board.
Yes, it was.
The last one is.
Oh, and, and I know, I don't mean to make this longer, but does anybody have any, or maybe something that we should discuss more though, in regards to the state of the tax, whose tax cap that NICOM is sending out, that is actually very important on how it impacts, uh, municipality with budget purposes?
Did I get something you need to talk, talk about?
Later. I agree. Uh, old businesses, our old business, we went over the senior building.
Yep.
Um, zoning law, we can't do anything, that needs to continue to be tabled until hopefully, maybe we will be able to have this done later on this month?
Did a damn water wall first.
Um, proposed water wall needs to be tabled as well.
You want to table it or you gonna look at it for a few minutes?
I, I wanna go home, it's eleven o'clock, man, it's four hours, we'll, we'll have a.
So you mean to tell me, I sat up for four hours breathing that water law the other night, 'cause I figured we were gonna talk about it tonight?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna table, we need to have a meeting very quickly, 'cause it sounds like people were.
They sat there and spent four hours going through it.
I would say, if we were to look at having a meeting on Saturday, I'd say that'd be, that'd be fine. And we can just, and, because you would have to talk about the water law. Um. Maybe I'll have some more stuff on some of the other things. Um, yeah, I would say if we have a meeting on Saturday, we can go over the rest of the stuff that's gonna be tabled.
No, real quick though, before, let's freshen our brain, what was, I didn't catch her, spew, what was she saying? It's, it's state law?
She said we cannot change the state law that says that we are all responsible to the curb. The homeowner is responsible from the curb box to the meter, we cannot change that law because it's.
It's law.
I'm not a hundred percent positive that actually is state law that specifies that, I think that may be a matter of local law. And my understanding is that different municipalities do have different standards, but most of them say, from curb box to meter is responsibility of resident. And part of it is because it goes under resident land, under the resident's land, and you would have to get their permission to go and dig it up. And if you don't have their permission to go and dig it up, you're committing a trespass, unless you wanted to record an easement for every one of the houses for your water service, just like the electric company does for their electric lines. And they do, if you look at it, you can find electric utility easements on property, so it's an easement of record. Otherwise, you want it to be on that, because it's a huge hassle administratively for you to deal with other people's property.
Do you know anything about that, are we stuck with that pretty much, that it's gotta be from the curb box or? You gotta.
That's why I'm.
Can you look into that a little bit and see, I mean, uh, most of people.
Whether or not there's a specific requirement under state law preventing it from being moved from curb box to?
There's so many people out there right now that thought that the village was responsible to the meter as it is, so.
I mean, my question is, we got all these new meters going in?
But we'll say, you're gonna break, there's old lines.
If we break the water line to the new meter, and who's gonna pay for that?
When, if, if, if I can interject.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
When, speak to Mark, Eli and Alan Jacob about when ran off to their meters.
And they had.
That came up, so they had several of those issues.
Oh, he did.
They were addressed, you know, it's, it's part of the process, I mean, it's, you're not creating something new here, it's.
Yeah.
It's all been.
Yeah, he, yeah, he talked us up at the.
Yeah.
Let's tell you about that. He's gonna have some older people in here, it seems like, I would imagine, for this, 'cause it seems like it's coming up a lot.
Well, let's, you want people to attend so they can explain it.
The new water meters, I think, is gonna create revenue for the village. So I was kind of thinking that maybe that that would be like a give and take situation, but we can't change.
Well, what is this?
That's a complaint that we, that Daniel opened right before the meeting.
Eric, but we'll change that because water is, is, we're not making money off it right now, we need to have my appropriations, 'cause you have like, what Eric and Chris said, is that we have to have money to save for the future so that we don't have to have, you know?
Hundred-year-old transmission lines.
Correct, we have some money that they can help cover for, which we, we've never done, we have to have a, a plan of action for a rainy day fund essentially, so.
And state law does allow you to run at a slight profit in order to build up a rainy day fund.
Right, yeah. Um, so, oh, that's right. Um, well, just to finish the new business or the business, so water law will be tabled as well, we'll be on that. Uh, we already talked about city to round pop on accounts for new business, we already talked about the Pat and E Trail, um, this is a little fever. Policies, we'll go over that again, uh, that'll be tabled. Same with trash pickup, police ticket revenue, uh, which I will be submitting a letter to the town tomorrow in regards to that, and hopefully be able to speak with them, hopefully on next Monday, and you start the process on that. Mowing DPW, these are already gone.
Hold on, one quick thing with that, mowing for the DPW, we had Chunk doing that before, and then he retired, he ain't doing it anymore.
Right, we haven't had anybody do it now, so.
Toad is doing it now.
Right.
Why is Toad mowing the lawn instead of being on the road and water? He should be doing his job, not spending all.
Well, who the heck do you want to have mow?
Can I?
Why can't we get somebody with whatever we're paying Chunk to?
Well, we got a couple of part-timers starting in the next week, so let's.
Can I screen to that?
Yes, Tom.
Chunk's payment came out, he was essentially considered somewhere else, the same.
Yeah.
Um, so coming up here, you know, people have, what did he say, three?
Three.
Rose, I thought you said he was considered part-time.
I'm not saying she should sit on a long hour and do that, whatever, but it would help, uh.
He worked basically the same hours as someone else.
How many, how many summer employees do you have left?
But he didn't, he didn't come out of summer help.
Was that what I meant last year? That's what I meant.
About a year before?
It's not summer.
No.
A year before, I think, was still Chunk.
I just don't see why Toad should be on the order, he should be out.
Dad, what?
I'm pretty sure last year was the first year.
I'm not sure, it's not sure.
Oh, was last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, any, anyway. Point, my, I guess my point was that there isn't a whole lot of option or choice there, like right now, but it'll help in the next few weeks when you've got more hands.
Right.
To, to do with the project, and that's up for John really to decide how that gets done, I think.
Yeah.
But that's just my.
Because then you gotta talk about who has the license to drive a trailer and all that kind of stuff.
Right, you know, he, there's, there's a lot for him to do there.
So.
Let's table it.
Okay. Uh, more authorization, oh, we have, uh, this Thursday, is it Thursday, Rose?
Yes.
Uh, Thursday, I am meeting with, uh, the Teamsters to discuss about a, uh, contract with them for the supervisory position or superintendent position. Um, and I need the board to authorize myself to do the negotiations with them as well, as far so that benefits the village, and to go ahead and sign that when we do that.
I like the workflow.
You know, me and the alert contract, what's that mean?
The bargaining agreement that's already set forth with the other, the employees that we have now, there's no, there's not one for supervisor position, and we need to create one for that. So in order to do that, we go board with that.
Okay, why? Why are we making the supervisor a union position?
The union.
Because it never has been.
Right, so that they have the protection of civil service, like we talked about in the past, how the month.
Yeah, but they, I, I told you. The union, the union contract won't give them civil service, I mean, that's a separate.
Yeah, it's too late to talk about this.
No, the civil servant or the union contract can stay in there, just like it does with the bargaining agreement for the laborers that are contracted under section seventy-five and seventy-six of civil service, yes, that, 'cause you're bound to that contract with the Teamsters for whatever term, whether it's three years, which is what it is right now with.
Yours is the only problem I have, or one of the major problems, I do, I, I've thought about this. If somebody is hired at, say, fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars a year, if that's in that, in that contract, you ain't coming back from that, you ain't taking money away from the union.
Right.
So that's just gonna keep going up, up, up.
Well, whatever, yeah, that can be two percent increase each year.
Right, but we had forty-five thousand dollar salary before.
Well, that, we haven't even discussed what salary's gonna be, it doesn't matter who's in that position, it's just this is what the, this is their protection and this is what's going on for them.
You do not want, that's crazy. As a goat's taxpayer, that is nuts. You've got ulterior motives and that is crazy, to make a supervisor.
All right, public comment is not.
I'm just telling you, I, I, I'm, I've been really good for the last four hours. But you trying to unionize your new hire who's sitting behind me as a con, as, in a contract, that is ridiculous.
Whoa, hold on, you are out of line that you're making.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with being out of line, that is absolutely ridiculous.
Okay, you're, you can.
They're gonna take conclusions.
Exactly.
No, I'm not.
I think you are.
No, I'm not. I don't care who it is.
All right, either you can remain calm and collective and listen to what's. Alright, either you can remain calm and collective and listen to what's heard.
I'll stay calm, I'll shut up.
Or you can move, thank you. So in regards to the supervisory position, which we've discussed for the past month, over many hours. We discussed about having a supervisor have the same protection that our employees have, our laborers, which we could go classify them to be water and sewer and whatever. So why all of a sudden now is this an issue to bring up that we're gonna actually start the negotiations to get that going, so that when we fulfill the position for whoever becomes our new superintendent. Actually is covered and has protection instead of it just being.
I'm not, I'm not going away from the protection, I, 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 I don't see a problem.
He's worried about starting at a high salary and then they're.
It's gonna do nothing but keep going up, it's.
Ten years later, they're making eighty grand.
You, you, yeah, I mean, you're just keep adding to it.
Well, that's. Well, that depends, that's when we do the hiring, what we're going to set, whoever takes that is able to take that position.
It needs, it needs a lot more thought, okay, that's what we're working on.
But now the, the position or the hiring or the starting salary, that's to be determined, that's nothing that's gonna be set in stone in the, in the.
It will be in a contract.
No, it, you're, whoever you hire starts at the salary, and then whatever their increased raises can be set at two percent, three percent, four percent, five percent, whatever you want.
I'd have to see it before I approve it, I was like.
Well, we don't even have anything to.
I know, you're talking, we're starting negotiations, I, I get that, but I'd have to see it before I go along with it.
Yeah.
Alright, Word, what is your stance on this?
Um, I've already said my stance. I, I think it needs more thought. You want me to go with protection, then you make a motion that, uh, you'll waive your right and make it a board decision of who's hired and fired, and then maybe that's the protection I want, not contract.
Can't change that, it's the law.
Well.
Okay, I'm not gonna give this argument, I will meet with them and I will bring it back to the board, I have you guys review.
Yeah, get more information on it.
That's what I will do with that. Uh, there's no appropriations, sir.
I, I'm sorry, I, we do have a motion on the floor from Boda, authorize you to do that, so.
Huh? Yeah, you made.
I had the, you made a motion.
Oh, I'll re, I'll retract it. I'll retract the motion.
Can you retract a motion?
Why not?
Re-send it.
Re-send?
Yep.
Okay.
Re-send.
Is there anything for appropriations, Rose?
Uh, no, just approving the abstract.
Alright, uh, can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
What was that? Turned close, go on.
All the options that you just signed for?
Oh, yes, I made a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved. Um, last thing, there was a complaint that we did receive that was addressed to the board, um, by, what is it, Jane Stuffing? Okay, stating, is it really necessary to have the noon whistle blow five times, once is too many? Um. And she just goes on about how, saying how it's annoying her to visit with people or, or to be on the phone, and that continues to go on, um.
Actually, I don't listen to.
That's not the village, the village, that's the fire department, the village has no.
That's why Joe Levis is such a.
What's that?
I've been trying to address that for four years, I've gotten nowhere with it. Everyone tells you a different story, they tell you they can't change it, uh, it's.
It is one.
East Side got rid of theirs, 'cause they just go with Peters and, and so on, it's.
It is pretty low, I, I know Kathy Forester used to.
It's great, but I mean, it's.
Fire alarm, goes off.
Yeah, but it's, it's Kenny, I know, I.
Tradition.
I don't mind if it wasn't blown up, but five times is generally.
Alright, and then, uh.
Way too.
Just unplug her.
Alright, and then also, yeah, okay, so. Yeah, are we gonna meet on, is there right down the meeting on, on Saturday in the morning?
You covered everything but.
Yeah, but you haven't talked.
No, we got tabled stuff that's gonna get done, so.
We got, the means, we gotta hammer out the water policy so that we can go ahead and start that process, the water law, excuse me, and get that going.
I can't go, I trust you guys to make the decision.
Okay, Word, can you attend on Saturday?
Yeah, about, about ten?
Nine?
Nine, no.
Five, we're doing.
Nope.
Alright, nine. Yeah, he sold it, didn't he?
Are we also meeting on the twenty-second?
Yeah. Alright, so, we're meeting on Saturday at nine o'clock, alright, what?
Six thirteen, Saturday when, what time?
Nine?
Nine.
I thought, it's the age, you think I said?
Was there actually a motion for that?